Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the town planner, and I will do roll call for the commissioners and then turn it over to our chair. Patrick Carrier?
Here.
Scott Halsted?
Here.
Matt Wagner?
Here.
I'll note for the record at the moment Liz Sanford is absent. Ina St. James?
Here.
Okay, and I'll note for the record that Mike Graboulis is absent. Alternate members Matthew Bandle?
Here.
And I will note for the record that Bob Canto and James Ratcliffe are also absent this evening.
Okay, let's begin. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am Ina St. James. Welcome to Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Meeting. Today is October 23rd. We're going to start with the new business items first and then move on to public hearing. Before we do that, though, Scott, please read the legal notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on Monday, October 23, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. 220 Associates LLC, application for change of zone from BR to B1 for property located at 220 Farmington Avenue. 220 Associates LLC, application for special permit and site plan approval to expand medical office use for entire building located at 220 Farmington Avenue. Town of Farmington, application for special permit to expand use of turf field lights for eight additional games, four for high school athletics, and four games community/recreation. And PA system request for full use for all official high school games and community/recreation night games, and limited use for all other youth recreational games located at 10 Montith Drive, R40 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in the hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at 1 Montith Drive Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website at the address on your screen. A copy of this proposal is online at the address on the screen or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this fifth day of October 2023, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, and as St. James Chair.
Thank you. Liz, welcome. Thank you. It's all good. Matthew, this evening you'll be a voting member. That works for you?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Yay. Thank you for making it in. All right, the first item, it's a kind of a standard one. It's an application from Harry E. Cole and Son for property located at 222 Talcott Notch Road. And this is the applicant's first 90-day extension. We need a motion and a second.
Correct. Yeah, there's nothing additional to share other than what was in the gender review. The application had been submitted and approved on July 31st. And we're just working through some engineering comments with the applicant.
That works.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the request for 90-day extension for filing of subdivision mylar maps from Harry E. Cole and Son, 222 Talcott Notch Road.
And second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, the next new business item is from Miss Porter School. It's for a property located at 2 Mill Lane. And who do we have?
We have Jackie Murray with Miss Porter School.
Okay. Come on up. Thank you.
Right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jackie Murray. I'm the Director of Campus Planning and Design at Miss Porter School. I'm here to talk about our 2 Mill Lane property. Miss Porter School purchased the 2 Mill Lane, formerly known as Jig Store, back in 2015. Since we purchased it, we have been using the first floor space as storage. It has not been used as a retail space since we purchased it. And the second floor space has remained apartments for our faculty members. We are hoping to renovate. We are hoping to make the first floor space a classroom, seminar, and assembly space. And the second floor would stay as apartments. The primary use of this space will be classrooms. It's a large space, and we've seen a need for larger classrooms on campus. In our current designs, we can fit up to 30 students in this space, which is really important, and it's gonna fill a big need that the school has. Occasionally, we hope to use the space in the evenings. For example, if our trustees come to campus, it would be nice to host a dinner there. We also, if there is a need, hope to offer it to the Farmington Historical Society. There is a strong historical significance, and we'd love to offer that to the town. Our plan for parking is to utilize, there are two, three spaces in the front of the building that will remain. We also plan to offer all of the Miss Porter's parking lots to our guests. We have the parking lot at 88 Garden Street, the Grist Mill, and also the tennis court lot on Garden Street. So we do have ample parking. Our students and faculty are quite accustomed to walking anyway. Many of them live on Mill Lane. So we don't foresee a need for any additional parking at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to the commissioners for questions. Patrick?
No questions.
Matt?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Scott?
No questions. Thanks.
No questions.
And Matthew?
No questions.
Geez, what's going on here? Okay. All right, so you said that, all right, so up to 30 students or 30 people could occupy that space. And how often would that be happening?
So classroom space, it could be every day. Likely it would not be used every day, but we'd like to have it available every day. During the day, classes start at 8:30 and they're done by 3:20 in the afternoon. The evening use would be far less frequent. I would say a couple times a quarter perhaps, but it would not be a regular thing.
So the only thing that could be, but I don't think it will be because you mentioned alternate parking, but you know, parking could be a hassle, right, for residents and whatnot, but if there is an evening meeting for the Historic Society, you're gonna guide participants to your other lots?
Sure, yes, of course. We would send an email letting them know if the parking available to them.
Okay, that wasn't the only, I guess, concern, but it looks like you took care of it. Any questions? We're good. Okay, are we good to vote? Everyone know what we're voting on? Okay, thank you. All right, so we need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion to approve the application from Miss Porter School, Inc., 2 Mill Lane, for classroom and assembly use. Commission review per Article 4, Section 12, B1 Zone.
Okay, and second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think it's unanimous. You are all set. Thank you. You'll be hearing from town staff. Thank you. All right. Next one is an application we are accepting from Michael Lavoy. We need an emotion and a second, please. And read the entire thing, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the application from Michael Lavoy, 12 Winter Drive. Accept the application for special permit for home business for the raising of rabbits and keeping of poultry, R9 Zone, and scheduled public hearing. Recommended hearing date of December 11th, 2023.
And second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Is that our first item for December, Shannon?
Yes.
All right. All right, and the last new business item is the 2024 calendar. Did everybody have a chance to look at it? A copy has been provided. I wanted to say thank you to town staff for moving the November meeting to after elections. So that's awesome. There is one meeting that's happening during the April holiday. I don't know if there's much that can be done. Do you agree, disagree? Are you okay?
No, I was just thinking I had my school calendar in front of me, but I don't. I left it at home. Just gonna check.
It does, so Sandy noted that the first meeting in April does align with spring break for Farmington. But because of town meetings and all the extra meetings that take place with respect to leading into budget approval, we don't have, the only other option would be to cancel it if we need to. So we'll have to just watch that as we approach in March. And if we, if we will not have quorum, then that'll be an issue. Presumably, we can get four of you.
Yep.
When the time comes, so.
I, no issues for me.
Okay.
Yeah. Good.
Okay. Scott, you're staying on, so that you're good? Matthew?
All set.
Okay, good. All right, I know, I know. All right, it's all good. All right, we need a motion and a second to approve the 2024 calendar, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2024 meeting schedule as presented.
And second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're good. Sounds good. All right. Now to the public hearing portion of our meeting. All right, this is where applicant presents to us. We have a chance to ask questions, and then we turn it over to the public, both here and online, and see how it goes. The first item in front of us for public hearing, anyway, is an application from 22 Associates LLC. It's an application for change of zone from BR to B1 for property located at 220 Farmington Avenue in Farmington. And who do we have?
We have Mr. Phil Doyle.
Okay. Okay, hi there.
And Phil, I'll leave it to you to discuss with the commission as to whether or not you want to just do one presentation.
I think we should do one presentat, we have two public hearings. One is for special permit. I'm Philip Doyle, been before you before. My firm prepared the site plans for you. The, we have a public hearing for a zone change from BR to B1 and a public hearing for a special use permit for the use of the building for medical office buildings. And it's probably better to handle it all at once. The maybe we should go to the second, that's yeah, the site survey. Let's go to the, maybe the grading plan, Shannon.
The demo.
I think that reads better. Grading or plant him plant. But this is a, this is 220 Farmington Avenue. It is one site removed to the, to the west of the Tappanote Road intersection. I don't know if any of you remember, but years ago it used to be Crest Blueprint. And it was, I think, built originally in the 1960s. The Margolis has bought it, and we did the site plans at that point for Crest to take it over light industrial type use. It's had a number of different zonings over time. And it has been used for a number of years as office. And about 11,000 square feet of the building has been used relatively recently, up until the present, for medical office. And the doctors who own it bought the building after, none of us were involved, but after a plan with 230 Farmington Avenue, the adjacent site, to do some type of mixed use development. And there were variances granted, approvals granted. So the lot is a little bit odd shaped on that left-hand side. The side yards have been, have been reduced. It's a different type lot. And the lot extended in that, that exchange back into the actual parking area of, of 230. Our understanding is that at some point that there, there will be a development that will happen on that piece of property that will be separate from the 220 piece. And the, there is a, there is pavement from the 230 that is still remaining on the 220 piece. That will be removed by others after the, the 230 site is ultimately reviewed and, and approved by, by you. I mentioned that because any type, time pavement shows up in an area like that, it, it works against you when you're trying to do something on a piece of property because you have to include it as your impervious surface. So what we have requested is a, the use of the building for medical purposes. When we, when we look at the entire building for medical purposes, I need to add parking. And because the current layout was, of the parking lots was designed for industrial purposes, what we really need to do is make the parking more efficient. We have to get rid of the older loading docks that are, that are inefficient. And we have to tailor it so that it is correctly laid out for current office parking. You've seen in the narrative we put together, you have two different methodologies for looking at medical parking. One is based on, on how many professionals are in the building, and you multiply that by a certain number. It might be six parking spaces per professional. And then you look at it in terms of square footage of usable space. You have to take the worst, the worst in this situation is 73. And that's actually by taking the use, the usable space, dividing it by 150 square feet. And that's what we have proposed as a, as a parking lot. There are currently about 48 parking spaces on, on the property. We will be, what we have asked for is the approval for those 73. And if you grant that, we need to have you grant the approval to have impervious surface greater than 40%, but less than 50% because we'd be in the 49% range. Currently, it's 47%. When we were able to, one of the reasons I mentioned the property or the parking on the 230 lot, if we can, if eventually that is removed, then the, the, the impervious surface drops back down to about 46%. What we would be also requesting is our ability to defer parking, 25%, which is allowed if you approve it under the, under the regulations. And that would bring us closer to what we think we need for, for parking. We'd be, I think, deferring 18 spaces, so we'd be back at 53, about 55 spaces that we'd be, we'd actually be building. The current use of the building is, has only been about 12 to 15 parking spaces. And for the doctors who are in this building and the potential doctors that might move in, all of them have other practices. This is a satellite center, so it's not intensely used. And we have also asked for approval to identify 25% of the parking spaces as compact. And we'd be, in making the parking lot more efficient, we'd be setting up a 24-foot aisle in 18-foot deep spaces, which is allowed under the regulations, but you need, you need to know that and approve it. We would be increasing the total impervious surface on the site by about 1,200 square feet. That's the, that's the number. And currently, there's really no stormwater treatment on, on the property. What we'd be proposing to do is adding a treatment area, rain garden along the eastern, where actually the way the site is set up, north is sort of in, up to the right, south is to the bottom. So I've always perceived Farmington Avenue going into West Hartford as east, but it, it sort of is. But it's, it's sort of southeast. That's where we'd be putting in the rain garden. That rain garden could treat up to 2,000 square feet, so we'd be trying to improve the stormwater treatment using an LID technique. And all that was really great. We were going along, Shannon, Bruce and I had, had looked at it. And there was a variance granted at some point in the past to reduce the building front yard. And you know the way the regulations work when you're in a commercial zone like this. Your parking is, is aligned with the front of the, front of the building. So we assumed that, that, that variance that was obtained by others automatically said building can move up, that means the parking can move up. And I think Shannon, you or, or Bruce researched the, the, the files and, and found that the, the interpretation is it applied to the building, not necessarily the parking. So to cover our bases, because a BR does not allow you to park as, as, as far forward as the B1, we believe that we need a, that's why we're asking for the zone change. The, the B1 and the BR allow the medical office use, but the B1 would allow us to place the parking spaces where we need them to be. And so we believe it's, would be appropriate. It's the same use on, on the, on the piece of property. And we, we, we have a mixture of different uses in that area. The, the POCD talks about, you know, the latest update in 2018 talks really about sort of a master overlay zone for this type of use within the, the, that's called Yukon Medical Area. And, and we're well within that. So we seem to have an amalgam of zones in that area. Everything recognized in the POCD is migrating towards medical office or medical research. And so we believe that this request would be consistent with, with where the town is going in, in, in that direction. That's pretty much the sum and substance of it. Relatively straightforward. And do you have any questions?
Thank you. And thank you for the documentation. It was very detailed. Thank you for coming in today. And let's turn it over to commissioners. Patrick?
Oh yeah, just to be clear, the reason for deferring the parking is because you're thinking you might not need that, those 18 spaces?
Absolutely. What the count is low as it is, we, we think even when, when this is built out, when the additional 4,000 square feet is built out, that we're only gonna be using 25 or 30 parking spaces. See, the use analysis, what your parking analysis for medical is very interesting in that it has you take a look at how many doctors or professionals, and then compare that to the other. Now, it picks the worst case. But when we look at the number of professionals that will be in, in the building, it only generates a need of 38 parking spaces. So our real need is only going to be 38, maybe 40 parking spaces in, in really a worst-case situation. But the parking, the way the regs are written, it's demanding that I, I use 73 as the number because that's just a, that's sort of the old-fashioned division method. So we're never gonna need that many parking spaces.
Okay.
But what we have to do is we have to be prepared. And you can see that one of the conditions that, that's in the, in the approval, like anything else, we have to be prepared to build that if, if we need it. And, and that's a standard provision. And so, so no one's trying to, to duck out on eventually having to build it if we need it. Because in theory, this use, these uses 10 or 15 years from now could, could leave. The building could be sold, and you could have another medical office use in there that will require more spaces. And to protect the public, you have to have that ability to require that.
Okay, and you answered my next question, which was the, the, that condition, which was on the agenda review. So obviously, you covered that. Thank you.
You're good. Okay, how about you, Matt?
Hi, thank you. Can you talk about the current occupancy of the building? Like, what's the, what's the mix of tenants? How much of percent is occupied?
Well, right now, I, I think only about half is, is occupied. The up to 11,000 square feet, which, out of the 15, so let's say it's probably three quarters has been occupied in the past. There is a building permit in, it has been filed in, with the building department that is to, they're intending to renovate some, one of those spaces that was previously used. That permit is, is on hold until you, you make a decision.
Right. And I think you said most of the space now is medical use?
Yes.
Right? And you're just looking to expand that?
It's pretty much all medical use right now. The, the doctors are looking to move in ancillary hand surgery center in at, at this point. I'm not sure who the other users are at the moment.
God, that was my next question, right? Like, is there, there's still a need for medical space? Obviously, this area of town is, right, it's a lot of medical space, right? Just granted, medical space, last meeting. Just curious your perspective on the demand for medical space in this area and why the owners think that's necessary?
Yes, there still is a demand.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Scott?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
How about you, Liz?
I, I think I remember reading in the details, the, the lighting was gonna change.
Oh, yes. All the, all the old lighting is about 25 or so feet high. Some of it has been changed out to LED, but not all of it. All of everything is, is being changed out, all being brought down. And it's gonna, all gonna be LED on, on 20-foot poles, but we're reducing the lighting on, on the property.
Okay, I think that was my one question. Thank you.
And Matthew?
Just two, really. The deferred parking, where on this, on this map?
All along the back, that all the spaces on the rear, we're proposing to defer. When people come to a site, they want to park near the doors.
Sure.
So we, we really, it's, it's the appropriate place to defer.
Okay. And question. 406 Farmington Ave, is that, is that a B1 zone? That's the Hartford Healthcare Building? I'm just trying to get an idea of what it?
That was a funny one. We did the site plans for that. And I don't remember whether, what the zone is, Shannon. Remember, that started out as, I think, a town garage. And that morphed over time. Dave Sessions from Castle Corporation bought it, and, and we redid it for Hartford Healthcare.
So Commissioner Bandle, it's showing as BR zone? I must be, I'd have to research the permits because that parking is right.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, because it's right on.
So it must be existing, non-conforming and predate. So depending on the historic use of the property and then the repurposing of it, some of that would have been grandfathered in, or if it was made less non-conforming as it was redeveloped, then it would have been permitted. So I, I do not have the full permitting history on that.
Okay. No, I'm just trying to conceptualize what it would look like. So that definitely seems in line.
So this is parking right up to the property line. The proposal before you would have it, as shown, would be 25 feet from the property.
So, so further from the actual road way. So, okay, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. So the building size is not changing?
Oh, no. Building doesn't change.
Okay. The way you enter this building will stay the same?
That stays the same. We're gonna be changing the curbing, replacing, you know, repaving things. We're gonna have to go for a DOT permit to do that, but everything stays the way it is.
Do you have any concerns with the engineering comments or working with that?
No.
Shannon, for you, the whole deferment or removal of the pavement at some point, does that get notated on the land records? Or like, how do we know?
So the deferral, what we will ask is it'll be noted on the special permit that is recorded on the land records.
Okay.
So it's a paper, an eight and a half by 11 document. The special permit gets recorded. And as noted, the final plans that are received by our office will have a notation. And so those are the record drawings that remain in our office.
Okay. Thank you. And is 230 just, nothing is happening at this point?
Correct. No. And, and as I noted, and I think it was is it 2018 or 2017 when that?
18, I think it was.
That came through. And there's, there's no movement on that at all. And we've had, we fielded a number of calls from attorneys, engineers, et cetera, with this particular property. The doctors have been quite frustrated because we haven't allowed them to fully tenant the building. Because there's insufficient parking based on the regulations. So everyone's hands are tied. So this is at the moment, the only mechanism to allow them to fully tenant the building.
Got it. Thank you. All right, I do not have any more questions. Thank you. This is a public hearing where people here in this room and online can ask the applicant questions or make comments regarding this application. If you're for or against it, is there anyone in this room that wishes to speak regarding this application? Come on to the podium. And Shannon?
Okay, if anyone has called in with respect to the applications for 220 Farmington Avenue, for 220 Associates LLC, for the zone change and for the use, please raise your hand. Using the feature in Zoom, and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone has called in in Zoom to offer comment or has questions regarding the application at 220 Farmington Avenue for 220 Associates LLC, for the zone change and the expansion of use for medical office and site plan amendment, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. Commissioners, are you satisfied? You have more questions for the applicant? We're good? Okay. All right, at this time, I will close the public hearing on these applications. And the voting should take place one at a time, right?
Yes, please.
Okay, perfect. So we need a motion and a second. Okay. Perfect. So we need a motion and a second for the zone change, please.
Uh, I'll make the motion to approve the application from two twenty Associates LLC for change of zone from B R to B one for property located at two twenty Farmington Ave as presented.
One second?
Second.
All right. Discussion, concerns, pretty straightforward. We're okay with this use?
It makes sense to me. This is, you know, this area of town, medical use. So there's demand for it. Makes sense. No, agree.
Agree.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed abstentions. Okay. Unanimous for the zone change. And we need a motion and a second for the special permit and site plan approval.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the application from two twenty Associates LLC for special permit and site plan approval to expand medical office use for entire building located at two twenty Farmington Ave as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Do we need, right, do we need to put in?
Shannon, do we need to add the conditions or what, how do you want us to do that?
Well, they did say as presented, um, we did talk about this. If you want to add them in.
Do you want me to add the, 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 um, all right, let me look here. I can add that then to be clear.
Yep. Thanks. Please.
Now I got to find them. Um, so we're defer, we're deferring the twenty, the eighteen parking spaces. Yep.
Yes.
That's really that, right?
Uh, compact of eighteen parking spaces.
Got it. One, two, one and two there?
Yeah, all of them.
Okay. Okay. I'll read them on. All right. I'll redo my motion there. All right. So I'm going to approve the app, uh, make a motion to approve the application from two twenty Associates LLC for special permit and site plan approval to expand medical office use for entire building located two twenty Farmington Ave with the following conditions. Defer the immediate installation of up to twenty-five percent of the required parking spaces or eighteen spaces per Article Four, Section eight A eight. Install up to twenty-five percent of the parking as compact spaces, eighteen spaces per Article Four, Section A dot A, uh, eight dot A dot nine. Uh, install nine foot by eighteen foot parking spaces with twenty-four foot drive aisle per Article Four, Section eight A nineteen. And then per, last one, per Article Two, Section twelve dot C dot five. Permit impervious coverage over forty percent, but less than fifty percent with a five, six vote. The law coverage increases by one point six percent of all the required parking is installed.
Uh, yeah. And then maybe add the six month. Yeah.
Oh, and then, uh,
Yeah.
Yeah, because this one's covered on, this one's in here.
The special permit?
Yeah.
All right. And then the effective date of the special permit, that one?
The one before that, um,
Oh, a note, uh, got, a note shall be added to the, to the plan and indicating the applicant owner, it's, it's, its successor shall agree to construct the spaces which have been waived within six months of a request by the commission or town staff to do so.
Okay.
Anything else?
We got everything covered, I think.
I think, yes, presented. As, you're right. So the engineering comments will be included in the, set the effective date.
Yep. You, were you the second?
No, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you are the second, sorry.
Chumps again.
Okay. Discussion. We're good. Same as this.
Again, it seems very logical, appropriate use.
And I like the fact that we have that, um, six month baked in.
Yep.
If anything happens to two thirty, which would be awesome that something did happen to the parts of the Lomas Plaza.
Yep.
Anyway, that's my opinion. All right. Uh, Shannon, do you just individually vote? That way you get the five, six, or does it matter to you?
I, if, uh, it, it does not have to be. If it's, if it's unanimous.
Okay.
There's, if there's concern with that, then we can do a roll call out.
All right. So I think we're okay. So we have a motion. We have a second discussion, whatever we wanted to discuss. We're good. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed abstentions. It is unanimous. So you got the six, six vote today. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. I want to thank the commission for working with us and thank the staff. This, this has been a
Thank you.
A, a process to figure out how to do it. And, um, we really appreciate everybody working with us.
Thank you. We had no idea till the documentation, the history, like how embedded everything was and decisions were made, right? Based on, yeah. But thank, thank you for working through it. Absolutely, Mr. Doyle. Thank you. All right. Moving right along. Uh, the next item in front of us is an application from Town of Farmington. It's an application for special permit to expand use of turf field lights for eight additional games. Four games for high school athletics and four games for community recreation. And P A system requests for full use for all official high school games and community recreation night games. And limited use for all other youth recreational games located at ten Montith Drive, R forty zone. And, um, before we begin, uh, hearing from you, the public about this application, I think it's important to remember that we're all here to find a balance between the use and enjoyment of public, publicly provided resources. In this case, the lights and the sound system and the neighborhood, which has the right to enjoy their homes. Um, sometimes this is not easy. And, uh, we're here to work through this with the applicant and, and input from all of you to find the best solution. So let's dig in. And who's doing the presentation, Shannon?
Uh, our assistant town manager.
Great. Thank you.
Kat Krajewski. Yeah, absolutely. I don't know if there was one already up there. I'd have no idea. Just because, yeah. Do you need, do you need, what do you need? The mouse too? I'm sorry.
You might have.
It's. Okay. So it's not. Okay. There you go. I'll play Vanna. Let me know when you need me to pause.
That's okay. You'll just be able to advance the slide when.
Okay. So I can just let this, just let it roll.
Enjoy the footage. Yes.
Perfect. Okay.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present, um, our application for special permit for the turf field lights and P A system at the Farmington High School turf field. My name is Kat Krajewski. I'm the assistant town manager and I'll be presenting on behalf of the Town of Farmington. As you may recall, the town presented an application in July, but was directed to provide additional information to make the request more specific. The town decided to withdraw its application in order to coordinate with all users of the turf field before solidifying our request and coming again before the commission. Okay, next slide. The new application is a collaboration between the Town of Farmington, Farmington Recreation, Farmington Public Schools and the Farmington Valley Mudhawks. There are representatives from these entities here tonight to support this application and are available to answer questions from the commission. Our, our specific request, which I will walk you through tonight, includes a number of games and events requested, the use of the lights and the use of the P A system. Next slide, please. First, let's review the current approval, which was granted in two thousand and fifteen. Farmington High School Athletics has approval for fourteen athletic events with the following conditions. No game shall conclude later than nine thirty P M. And no use of the loudspeaker either for announcements or music for any games other than an official high school game. The loudspeakers may still be used for limited special non-event games such as Relay for Life. Next slide, please. Our first request is related to the number of games or events that are requested for the Farmington High School turf field. I can go to the next one.
I, I.
Have you hit the arrow on the keyboard? That makes it go.
I'm, the arrow on the keyboard's not doing it. There we go.
There we go. Thank you.
Yep.
The town is seeking approval for no more than eight additional games to be used for programs sponsored by Farmington Recreation and Farmington High School Athletics. The, sorry, I think the slide went away for me a little bit. Farmington High School Athletic expressed the needs for additional games for their athletic programs. Four additional nights would be used for Farmington High School to evenly distribute games between boys and girls athletics to remain in compliance with Title Nine legislation. Next slide.
I'm trying.
Thank you.
It's, I'm trying, yeah.
I tried to be creative and use something other than PowerPoint. It's backfiring on me.
Sorry.
Farmington Recreation expressed an interest in four nights to be used by programs sponsored by the Farmington Recreation Department. Allowing youth programs to have night games to play under the lights is a wonderful opportunity for our young athletes and our programs. An example of potential usage would be in the fall season, mudhogs, football and cheerleading getting up to two games per year. And in the spring season, boys and girls youth lacrosse would get an additional two games as well. While the main use of the field would be for athletic events, the town is requesting flexibility to substitute a night game for a community athletic event uh, for a philanthropic cause, for example, the annual fire and police football game that's been held the past two years. Or for a special school related event like graduation where the P A system and lights could be used. The next part of the application is intended to clarify our requests related to the use of the lights. The way the current T P Z approval is written and end time is stipulated, but not a start time. We want to clarify what constitutes a night game in this approval by designing, by defining a night game as a game that begins at or after six o'clock P M and concludes no later than nine thirty P M. I believe that this is an important distinction because for fall and early spring sports, lights need to be turned on at the end of day games or practices due to the limited amount of sunlight. We are requesting the use of lights for practices in the fall and early spring as well as games that begin before six P M. And that should not count towards the twenty-two night games requested in this application. The use of the lights during these times is a past practice and we would like to codify that in our conditions of approval. Now let's talk about the P A system. As a reminder, the way the current approval is written, the loudspeaker speaker may only be used for official high school games. As a result, we have divi- divided our request into P A system use, full use and limited use. We are requesting the full use of the loudspeaker and P A system for all official high school games remains as approved. We are also requesting adding language related to the use of the P A system for recreational games that use the facility. For the four night games for Farmington Recreation, we are requesting full use as the P A system as well. And full use would be what you see now at a high school game or a, or a rec game where it would be touchdown or scoring announcements, music, introductions, halftime, all of the things that you typically see up there. That's what we're defining as full use. We would also like to add language related to the P A system for day games for our recreational programs that utilize the F H S turf field. Our investigation earlier this summer found that the recreation programs have used the P A system during their day games, which is not allowable under current T P Z approval. After meeting with them to review their needs, they were unaware that they were in violation. However, the use of the P A system has been an element to their success and growth of their program. And participants in both the flag and tackle mudhog football leagues, um, enjoy the atmosphere and experience playing at Farmington High School. They were very disappointed to hear that they could not use the P A system for announcements or music, including the playing of the national anthem. In our discussions with this program, we concur with the value of the P A system and have come up with some language regarding a limited use. That would be requesting the use of the P A system for games limited to introductions and general announcements. General announcements like, thank you for coming, our concession stand is open, things of that nature. The national anthem before the games and halftime music and announcements. The halftime music is especially important so that the cheerleaders would be able to do their perform, their performance as well. The town is committed to conducting spot checks to make sure that these are in compliance with the approvals. Town officials did conduct a noise test at the F H S turf field on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Noise test consisted of recording decibel readings from the P A system at various locations and adjusting to ensure compliance with the town noise ordinance. It was found that decibel readings were above the allowable limit ranging from an average of fifty-one to fifty-six decibels. And the daytime allowable limit is fifty-one decibels and the nighttime is forty-six. So what we did is the volume on the loudspeaker was lowered to an acceptable reading of forty-five decibels. It was locked so that the volume control in the press box would not exceed that decibel level. And that has been instituted since the beginning of the school year this year. The town will conduct another noise test this fall when temperatures are different, there's no more leaves on the field, the air quality is different. Um, as well as when the high school construction is complete because that may be limiting things as well. So we're, we're going to continue to go out there and make sure that the decibel limits are not exceeding, um, the noise ordinance limits. There's no video on this one. To summarize, the town is requesting the approval of twenty-two nights per year to be allocated as follows. Eighteen nights for Farmington High School Athletics. That includes the fourteen games they're already approved for and an additional four games. And four night games for Farmington Recreation Programs. We also present the following conditions for T P Z consideration. Night games shall begin at or after six P M and conclude no later than nine thirty P M. For the fall and early spring, when you're working against daylight, weekday practices and games beginning before six P M may have the use of the lights due to limited daylight and must conclude by eight fifteen P M. The loudspeaker for announcements or mu- music may be used for all official high school athletic games and special school, school related events at an appropriate decibel level per the town's noise ordinance. The loudspeaker for announcements or music may be used for Farmington Community and Recreation Night Games for games at an appropriate decibel level per the town's noise ordinance. The use of the P A system for all other Farmington Recreation Games is limited to introductions and general announcements before the games, the playing of the national anthem and halftime music and announcements at an appropriate decibel level per the town's noise ordinance. The town, the turf field at Farmington High School is a true community asset, the value of which has grown for both Farmington High School Athletics and Farmington Recreation. We sincerely appreciate the opportunity to present to the Town Planning Zoning Commission to codify past practices and modify the current approvals to fit the growing needs of Farmington Athletics. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners, let's dig in. Patrick, let's start with you and questions.
I, I don't have any questions at this point. I'm just gonna keep listening.
Okay.
We have a full room here.
That's fine. How about you?
No, no, it's one, thank you for this presentation. I appreciate the detail and the increased transparency around this because this is an important one. Just like, just a quick one for me, um, around the use of the lights when there's not enough sunlight, right? I get the plus four and the plus four, but um, how, how does that look today? How does that look for practices today that exist when there's not enough sunlight like now, right? And then how many times do we think that happens today? Or how many times do we think it would happen?
So I can start and then I have Matt Martorelli and
Sure.
the athletic director and Jeff Porter, who's with our recreation department. Um, but currently they're being used for practices. Um, school gets out and practices start and the later and later you get in the season, the darker it, it becomes sooner. So uh, right now the lights are being used for practices. So we did want to codify that in, in our application.
Got it. So they're sort of used every day during the school week from now through fall sports are over. Just again, just trying to get a sense of their use today and what we're trying to look to prove, you know, after tonight.
So for, for the high school, we'll begin to use the lights more for practice purposes as daylight becomes less throughout, throughout the day. I know that we do have it turned on for, um, Farmington Recreation in, in the mudhog, uh, football.
Right.
Um, I believe that's Monday through Thursday right now.
Thursday, um, we go sunset, minus thirty minutes through eight fifteen P M, but we do ask them to end their practices at eight o'clock, but give them the fifteen minutes to get
Yeah, of course.
access to their cars.
Yep. Okay. Okay. So there's sort of a, there's a good amount of use at this, at this point of the year. Okay. Um, I'm, I'm good for now. Thank you.
So of the, the twenty-two events, are they split like relatively evenly between fall and spring?
I think it would be primarily in the fall.
It's heavier in the fall. Okay.
It's, it's heavier because it is the daylight factor. I mean, early spring, potentially, there could be some, some games depending on when in the season they fall. But really, and, and now I'll let you jump in based on scheduling because you have past experience scheduling them. Um, I, I would say it's more fall heavy.
Yeah, for the most part, it's going to be fall use. Um, but it would be pretty close to fifty, fifty for the, for the eighteen. Yeah, for the most part, it's going to be fall use, but it would be pretty close to fifty-fifty for the, for the eighteen games for the high school. And then for, for Farmington Recreation, I must be on their behalf as well, but we, it looks like it was split for two, two and then, and two.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I'm all set.
Okay. Liz.
I just reiterate the thank you for the details. It's much appreciated and gets real feeling for this. You said you have done the, the noise testing, which is great. My question is, has there been any questions or complaints about the fixed lower level? Of the decibels of the P A system? Has anyone said, hey, I can't hear anything or?
To my knowledge, I have not received any complaints.
We have not received any complaints either about any noise complaints from our P A system.
That's it, Liz? What happened?
That's it.
Okay, how about you, Matthew?
Uh, just maybe some clarity on the difference between full use and limited use. It seems like the real difference is the play-by-play. Is that, that's all it really?
Yes, that, that was the intent is that when you're playing under the lights, it, it's typical to have, and I don't think it's every single play is being announced, but it's commentary. Scoring announcements, the typical ongoing P A system use. Whereas the limited use would be before the game and halftime. And that's really it. Continuing throughout the play, no play-by-play, but it really gives them announcements, introductions. Halftime for the cheerleaders and the National Anthem before the game as well.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Yeah, that's it for me.
Okay. All right, so. If for some reason the special permit is not passed tonight, are we no longer in compliance with Title IX?
No, we would make sure that we would still stay in compliance with Title IX.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I believe the, the, the language for it was that the, the increased use would not pull us out either, that it would just, we would, we would hold that Title IX compliance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for redoing the application and there are definitely still two things going on. We have lights and P A. So thank you for breaking it out. Um, let's see here. So. I, I got stuck a little bit on mudhogs. So mudhogs. It's a Farmington group and that's why they play in, in Farmington Field?
Yeah. Yeah, Farmington Valley Mud Hogs is a private parent-run organization that's co-sponsored by the town of Farmington.
Okay, uh, do they play in other towns?
No home games in other towns. They play their away games. We are their hometown.
Okay. Because I was wondering, okay, so there are some away games at other towns, okay? It's sounded like maybe all of them were at F H S, but that's clearly, clearly not the case. The P A system during the daytime, is it the same volume or same length of usage as the evening games?
With, with the limited use that we're proposing, it would not be the same length. It would be like on the Sundays when the mudhogs play, there are multiple games. So it would be for the first games, you know, and. How many, how many games would there be?
Typically three.
Three, three games. So. There would be the limited use for game one, game two and game three. Whereas before, before we realized that there was a non-compliance with the current approval, the P A system was used. For the duration of the game. And so that's why we're proposing full for night games and limited for day games.
Okay, and these games are Saturday and Sunday?
Just Sunday.
Okay, and.
Who is this? But, but currently, um, he is on the board for the mudhogs. I apologize.
All right, so we're talking about three games on Sunday and, and possibly something else. I guess we'll get more information on it and they start at what time?
They start in, yes.
The flag football program starts at eight thirty in the morning.
Yep.
They play on the turf until approximately noon when the tackle comes in to play on the turf. Flag football moves up to the grass.
Okay.
And then the turf has three games. Right now I think they're at twelve, two and four for start times.
Okay. It's been a while since I, I had scoreage yet. Thank you for being understanding. All right, so the whole P A, this loudspeakers. I, again, I have not been at the stadium in a while. Like, are they? Have they been adjusted? Have we re-aimed them over the years? Has anyone explored using different technology? Can someone talk to me about the loudspeaker?
I, I, you were a little bit more familiar, but I don't believe they've been updated in the recent future. I mean, that's something that we could. Look for in capital budgets in the future. But we did really make an, an effort to lock it in under not only the nighttime decibel level, but the daytime decibel level. So it is before, it is lower than, than the allowable limit for both nighttime and daytime to try to make sure that we. Are, are in coherence with the, um, the town code.
Where the speakers are though, is it coming from the top down or like where are they?
So right now we, we only have one set of working speakers which are on the home, home side bleachers. So they're close, the bleachers. Are closer to the. You can help me with the, the west, the west side and pointing back towards the current building over at Farmington High School.
Would it help if we pointed it differently? I, I don't know if that was ever done. Can even this be done?
That's a great question. I, I'm not a sound engineer, so I don't want to, um, you know. There is soundproofing that's pointing in, into that direction right now. Yeah.
Okay. Just wondering, so you know, just like. I'm not an engineer, everybody probably knows what I do, but. I'm sure there is other technology that's in place. I'm just wondering if it's time for that. That's kind of where I'm going with it. Um, the new school, I think you mentioned that it's. The location of it, do you think will buffer some of the neighborhoods or?
We're, we're not sure exactly how it's going to because when we were doing the decibel readings, it was still in the middle of construction. It will be in construction until it's ready in August, twenty twenty-four. So we're not sure exactly if sound's going to bounce off if because it was in construction, it was funneling sound towards the neighborhood. So we're looking to, to see how that changes things and how we can adjust.
And Shannon, from town perspective, are we getting a lot of complaints? Are you, is anyone calling to town?
So we have not received any complaints since the start of the fall season. So, uh, I know there's been football, our high school football games. Right? So there's been high school football games, home high school football games. We have not received any complaints regarding those. Um, and I don't know what the A V use has been for the mudhogs since the start of the season. Jeff shaking said none. Okay, so.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be any complaints because it's been temporary halted until this has been addressed.
Okay, I, I find to place this, of course, we're going to turn it over to the public and get people's input, but. High school has been there, right? With nineteen, twenty, whatever was the first building. We have a neighborhood around it. And, um. And I, I do feel that the town has to grow with the population of the students, the needs, but it's still a neighborhood, right? So we have to, um, be responsible. All right. I think that's it for now. Commissioners, before we turn it to the public, do you have any questions? Go ahead, Patrick.
Yeah, so the P A system, so it has not been used. In the fall this year, but how about in the past, it's, it's been.
It has been used for high school athletic events, which is allowable under the current approval. It has not been used, which historically it was in the past for the mudhog, hogs football, has not been used this season.
Right, but it has in the past.
In the past, yes.
And then at that time, were there any complaints then?
To my knowledge, we have not received any.
Okay.
No, they were voiced when this was brought up in July.
Right.
That's when it was, that's when it was voiced. So we hadn't received complaints, but it, it came to light through the original permitting process in July.
Right, so the, the, that's a new use, right? This limited use for essentially Sundays in the fall, right? Is that?
Yes.
During the length of this, whatever the length of the season is, right? Is it like September through, I assume early November? There would be Sunday sort of limited P A during the.
Correct.
Right for the.
And it's, it's not every Sunday because they are away some weekends as well.
Because there's, where there's flag football, I'm a flag football parent here. There's a flag football game every Sunday. Obviously, there's no P A for that.
Correct.
But the afternoon games, it depends on if it's home or away. So it's not every Sunday. So I think about it.
But, but it's important to note that it has been used in the past.
Yes, it had.
So really, if we were to prove it.
Got it, got it. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, got it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, one other.
Go ahead, Liz.
I was just going to say, how late in the season do they go in November?
Jeff, can you come to the microphone? Because it's not going to hit the recording.
Sorry. Flag football is scheduled to go through November twelfth this year. And the tackle football program really depends upon their playoff schedule on how they qualify. But they typically would stop just before Thanksgiving, I believe. No?
Yeah, so the last.
All right, I'm, if.
Yeah, we should.
Sorry.
You gotta come to the microphone.
Yeah.
And please identify yourself. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Jason Arnold, fourteen Essex Court, I'm the Vice President of Tackle Football for the Mud Hogs Association. Um, so the potential is that we would go until November nineteenth, um, most likely November twelfth. Uh, because we do our playoffs until the, the Sunday before Thanksgiving.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Scott.
So question for you, Shannon. I know with the high school, there was plans to put some buffering trees or something along. The backside, has that been done? Do we know? I'm just wondering if that will create some buffer from the field as well.
That's more in tune with the construction phasing and stages than I am on a.
Okay, yeah, during our, during our early enabling, um, phase last summer. When they were clearing and getting ready for the building to go in, they did replant some trees. Obviously they're smaller and we planted them during that time so that when the school is open, they have two years worth of growth to come back in. So there have been new plantings that have been put in.
Okay, thank you.
We're good for now or? Okay, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, um. I didn't know that the mudhogs were co-sponsored by the town. Are there any other organizations the town co-sponsors?
Work with the youth lacrosse organization as well.
Are they going to be included in this four?
Potentially, if there's a need in the spring, yes.
Okay.
We would try to do one boys, one girls, and we may try to overlap with the high school and depending upon their use in the spring.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, yeah, Shannon, so let's say, let's say we were to grant the, the use of the P A system. And the, somebody complains, um, and the town does a sound check. Right? Um, and it's too loud. At that point, there, it's against the regulation, right? Is that how it works?
Correct, and then we would work with them with the audio booth to get the volume adjusted and brought back down into the compliant level.
And if they're not able to, then, then they could, they can't use it, right? That's.
Cor- correct. I, in theory, they should be able to continue to drop it. I was part of the sound check that was done this summer. And so we had, um, I'd say three or four of us out on the field. Our police department has a handheld noise monitoring device.
Yeah.
And there were three or four up in the A V booth, including Mr. Martorelli. And there's a, there's two portions and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's two portions of the sound system. So there's a master control that's in a locked cabinet. And then there's a table console that the parents have access to. It was the master control in the locked cabinet that was adjusted. So that even when the table console was pushed all the way up. It was still at that forty-five decibel level reading on that master. So that the master control was, was locked in at the forty-five. Did I get that mostly right? Yes.
Okay, so there's, there's.
So in theory, it's not possible. So again, the only other thing we would check is because we did it in July with a certain humidity level, temperature. Ambient construction noise, is that different on a Friday evening in October and November when the temperature's? Forty or fifty degrees cooler.
Right.
Trees are starting to come off the trees, humidity levels are different and it does impact noise travel. So we will have to do another monitoring.
Right.
With P D. But again, to date, there has not been any complaint received regarding the noise for the high school games.
Right, and even if there are, there's a mechanism in place to protect.
Correct, so there's still room to continue to drop that.
Yep. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so commissioners, I will turn it over to the public. We will have a chance. Last questions, all right? So write them down in the meantime. All right, everyone, um, thank you for coming in. Uh, if you are here to speak regarding this application. In favor or opposition, come to the podium, state your name and address. And, um, let us know. So is anyone here that wishes to speak regarding this application coming up?
Madam Chair, if I may, just for anyone that has called in online, we will run through our questions and comments from those that are. Here in the council chambers and then we will take questions and comments from anyone that has called in online. So you can go ahead and raise your hand. We'll get to you, uh, once we finish with the questions and comments in the council chambers.
Okay.
Hello, Nicole Moore in one thirty-five Burtsey Road. Uh, good evening. Like I said, my name is Nicole and I'm a proud born and raised graduate of Farmington. When I say proud, I feel that that is an understatement. My grandparents laid their roots down in Unionville in nineteen fifty-six and stayed in town until their final days. When it was time for my parents to settle down, I'm glad they chose Farmington and we were able to experience everything this town has to offer. Growing up in town, there was never a shortage, shortage of sports, clubs or activities to join. I created lifelong friendships and mentorships that I still maintain to this day. Farmington created many opportunities for its residents, one of them being the Farmington Mud Hogs. My family has always been a football family, starting with my father and then continuing down to us children. I began my football career as a cheerleader with the Plainville Colts. However, when it was time for my sister to play, they weren't allowing females to join their league. Hence, the Farmington Valley Mud Hogs were started by my mother, Joan Warren. Since the mudhogs were started, it has always been a flourishing program. At one point, we had so many players that they were able to have their own tackle division. At that time, like stated before, we always had full access to the high school, fields, bathrooms, concessions and press box. Flash forward to our high school years, my sisters and I continued our football careers. We were all the managers for head coach Jeff Bemis. It was during this era when the lights were voted and approved to be installed. The buzz this town had and the camaraderie that came along with it was indescribable. Our town prides itself with inclusiveness and those football games were unforgettable. If there's anything that can bring the town together, it is a hometown game. Whether it was soccer, football, basketball, lacrosse or baseball, students, parents, faculty and alumni always showed up and will continue to do so. As a child, attending a high school athletic event feels like a pro game. The excitement on their faces, thinking one day that they can be like them is just unmatched. Every player aspires to be just like the high school quarterback or point guard or goalie that they see out there trying their absolute best. As a mudhog nation, we see this in our athletes. They are trying their best to get to that high school level and as parents, a coaching staff and league, we are trying to help them get there. Part of this is providing them with the same experience. This starts with the P A system. The National Anthem was first played in eighteen sixty-two at a baseball game during the Civil War. This became a permanent start to all sporting events, starting with the nineteen eighteen World Series game to World War One. At every game since, the National Anthem is played. From youth hockey to Little League to high school, college and pro, there is no reason why our game should be any different. As a proud American, I find it extremely disheartening that there isn't a way for us to honor our servicemen and women who continually put their lives on the line so that we can live in a free country. To have sporting events like this for our children. Another instance in which the P A system should have the limited use is for our cheerleaders to perform during halftime. Our girls were brought into the program shortly after it was founded and have done an amazing job growing under current leadership. They compete every year and has recently, and as of recent, have been competing at both the region, state and national level. It is only fair to us to let the girls perform their routines during halftime. They've worked on so hard during the season. They show up for the football teams in the cold rain and shine and the three minutes where the routine is performed is also an experience they'll never forget. In closing, what we are proposing is something that I feel the town embodies. We pride ourselves in what we do for the children, but what are we really doing for our children if we can't give them an experience they'll remember? There, these are simple requests that will create warm memories for the children. I can't tell you how many students I work with daily that tell me about the one time they made that play or the one time they heard their name announced. Please reach down into the child inside and help us make their childhoods memorable.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. My name's Ellen Stossi. I live at one thirty-four Farmington Chase Crescent. It's my third residence. I've been a resident of Farmington for thirty-four years. I've raised my daughter and now my grandchildren also live in town and are participating in the mudhog games. So as the parent and grandparent of children have grown up in Farmington. I fully support changing the ordinance to allow all students of the town to be able to use the town property items. Of the, um, high school football field, P A system and lights is laid out. of the, um, high school football field, P A system and lights as laid out and requested by the Recreation Department. I think this town strives for inclusivity and excluding certain students from using town resources does not seem right and was short-sighted when the ordinance was worded the way it originally was. And it's time to correct that error now and allow all appropriate town programs to use these town facilities to their fullest capacity. With that, though, the modified, um, P A system, I think is a good choice. Um, and I do understand, you know, there's houses near the field and families live there. Um, but with all due respect to these people, they, I would think they would have considered this when they were purchasing their property. Like people who purchase a property near an airport, they'll, they understand they'll be listening to airplanes. In this case, it's not a constant. They're not gonna have to constantly be hearing the P A system or the lights, and it's a peripheral type of, um, noise or, or lights. So I feel like, um, considering the benefit that it, the, it allows the children of our town to experience and the benefit it brings to them. It's really a minor, and the fact that it was being done until they realized they were out of, they were not complying with the order, ordinance originally. Then I, I really do hope that you choose, uh, to pass this for the benefit of the town and our children who are being raised in the town and growing up. Because the sports programs really are highly beneficial to everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Kristen Kirsch, uh, twenty Orchard Road, Farmington. Um, I have three students in Farmington right now. All three have played flag. Two right now are in the flag program. One is a referee. Um, back in twenty twenty, when we were all locked in our houses, flag program went off and we actually got to use the nights at light, or nights, lights at night. Um, and it was the most exhilarating experience for those kiddos. All on the field, wrapped up in blankets, because it was a cold night that night. And you would have thought that it was the state finals at the end of the season. For some of them, it was. Um, and they loved it. And so with this new proposal, it gives those children another opportunity to play under the lights, to feel like they're a star, and to just get that camaraderie between each other. It really was a fantastic feeling that they all had. Um, as the previous speaker said, I understand that there is a surrounding neighborhood. I highly doubt that any one of those people who moved in went, oh, let me check the town ordinances to see how many times those lights get used. Let me see how many times the speakers get used. No one looked at that. They bought their house because it was next to the school, because it was a prime real estate of location for them. And so I find it disheartening, we're being used around here, that that's now being used against the school, against the teams that are using that field space to not utilize this field, field space. How many of us have been impacted this fall by the weather? Go ahead, raise your hand, everybody in the room, right? So all of our games got pushed. Jeff Porter said that flag program got, is, is over in November ninth or whatever that date was. Because we got pushed out a week, because it's been raining every single weekend. If we were able to utilize unilaterally that field more often at night, in theory, these games wouldn't have to go out as far, but we're having to reschedule and borrow field time and overlap practices. And so we're going further into the evenings just to get that practice time in, so that we're not having to draw parents home from work early. Um, as far as loudspeakers are concerned, I think this is a great kind of middle road of full use versus partial use, where everybody gets what they need. The volume's in a locked box, so in theory, if the volume goes up, find the person with the key. They turned it up. Um, and so I'm in favor of let them play. Bad news bears. I know I'm dating myself, but let them play. Let them play under the lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Marie Louise Genetto, eight hundred Plainville Avenue, Farmington. I am the VP of Cheerleading for Farmington Valley MudHogs, and my son plays flag and my daughter plays cheer. Um, this is her last year in cheerleading for, um, as far as being a cheerleader, she can be a, what we call a junior demonstrator last year. And, um, part of what was hard for not being able to use the P A system just recently, um, yesterday, we had our senior day and all of the children were announced and were able to use a tiny little speaker just to have it, and you couldn't hear it. So on a parent level and a coach's level, um, we had multiple, um, football and cheer, um, athletes that should have been honored, you know, for everybody to hear, and we couldn't hear their names announced because we have no P A speaker. Um, and for our limited usage, just to give an idea, the National Anthem, which I personally think is very important at all sporting events, we've all seen the trouble with the NFL, people who are debating it and everything. I think it's important for our nation. We should all have it. We should start it at the younger levels. Um, for our children to be able to hear it, our children to be able to sing it. We have some wonderful singers from the Farmington Valley school systems that get out there and sing it when they can. Um, and at halftime, when our girls perform their nationally ranked um, routines, they're two and a half minutes long. So that's what we're looking for, just a very limited amount of time, and the boys and girls really earn it. So we would like you guys to consider that.
Alright, thank you. Come on up. Thank you.
Back again. Good evening, members of the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. Little horse. My name is Bernadette Longfield. I live at forty-nine Knollwood Road with my husband, Biff. We've been here well over forty years, forty-two, forty-three years. We have two children, Kelly and Ryan. Both of the kids went to Farmington High School. Ryan played on the football team and went on to play at Brown University at hockey, and our daughter went on to Colgate. And, uh, we have great, great, um, memories of the games at Farmington High School when our kids were there. And we often go over and watch the games at the high school. We're the closest house to Farmington High School right now. Unfortunately, we got the notice that this was occurring last night. We were away for the weekend. The notice came on Saturday. And we were away and we, we just found out about it last night, and my husband had another commitment. Which is too bad, because he knows much more about this than I do. Uh, Biff was the head of Building and Planning at ESPN for many years. And, um, I'm a financial advisor, so this is not my expertise. I spoke with you in mid-July regarding an extremely vague application at that time for the use of artificial turf field lights and the P A for, for the turf field at Farmington High School. My husband and I followed up with a letter on July twenty-seventh stating how we strongly opposed this request and the actual reasons why. We received this notice, as I said, on Sunday night. A prerequisite for granting a special permit, Section twelve B of the zoning regulation states that the commission will require compliance with certain standards. And this is your standards. And the standards read that the existing and future character of the neighborhood in which the zone and our use is to be located will be protected. And that adequate safeguards have been taken to protect adjacent property and the neighborhood in general from detriment. The application and information for such a request should include many details. And I'm happy to see that we got a lot more of those tonight, but still, there are missing pieces. To understand the full extent and impact of the request on the neighborhood and for full consideration. Focusing in on one thing. The most impactful issue to this request is the P A system. It's outdated. It's not carefully monitored. It's frequently too loud. What we hear is loud screeching. Gobbled words. Play-by-play announcement. That is out of control. Furthermore, the footprint location, the configuration of the new high school, the old high school, the concession stand, and the bank with the bleachers on, has created uh, an arena where the sound is projected to the neighborhood. Professional, professional studies should be made and continually done upon the completion of the high school and intermittently to make sure that this sound is monitored. And professionally is the key word. I say to you, imagine if you had a P A system across the street from your house. And you had small children that you had to put to sleep at night. Or you had to get up in the morning, three or, three or four o'clock in the morning to go to work. That is our neighborhood. That is why high schools are not built in compact neighborhoods. That is why night athletic facilities are not built in compact neighborhoods. And honestly, that is one of the reasons why Tunxus Mead was established many years ago, so that there was a night complex for activities for, for students to, to play their games. This request for special permit is different from the polo field car show request a while ago, where the car show was canceled because of the noise of automobiles and the impact that that had on the neighborhood. Why is this different? I can tell you honestly, because it involves kids. And therefore, it's very emotional. If you don't support me, you are considered not to be supporting kids. We have six grandkids and we are at their games constantly, all over the northeast and at UNC lacrosse for our granddaughter. There is nothing greater than you parents and grandparents and friends going to support kids. I mean, it's fabulous. It's the best. But standards have to be met and followed. If this is raised to a whole nother level and Farmington High School athletic field becomes an all-out night stadium. There's, there's a lot to consider. So we respectfully ask that you thoroughly think this through. That studies are made, sites are considered, and details are thought out. Just to give you an example, when this started a long time ago, my husband and I visited eleven or twelve night football events in Connecticut in situations that we discovered could be somewhat similar to this. So we really knew what was involved, what things were, were necessary. Proper lighting here, proper lighting there. So we were very familiar as neighbors. That's what really should be done. Before you turn this into an all-out night facility, the least that should be done is chalk the P A system, get a new P A system. Do it, do it right, because this does affect the neighborhood. Why aren't these neighbors here tonight that have these issues? They are concerned about being felt that they're against sports. And that's, you know, a feeling that I have, because there is not one person in this room other than you coaches who do great jobs, that have attended as many games as my husband and I this, this fall, and continually. So it is not about our children and the opportunity they have to do their thing, because hats off to them. They work hard and they deserve to have the opportunities to play. But it's where and how, and how classy are we? How can we make this town of Farmington continually, continually be a class act and do the right thing, have the right equipment? My gosh, we have to have the right equipment for their, for their games, the right, the right footballs, the right, you know, right sports equipment. But we have this P A system that is antiquated. And the person who's doing the announcing should, you know, do we need an NFL play-by-play? It is an NFL play-by-play screaming. Let's class it up. And thank you very much for your time, and I'm sorry it has to be me and not my husband here tonight, but I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Jason Arnold, fourteen Essex Court. Um. Uh, first, I think that there's some opportunity here, especially if you consider the, the P A system. Um. We'd be willing to work with the school system to maybe potentially do a capital funding campaign to possibly upgrade the P A system. Uh, the MudHog Program was instrumental in building the, the building that's out there now, where the snack shack is under the same premises, but that's what we did. So if it's a matter of new equipment, then I'm certain that we can get those three hundred kids and families to work to try to raise money to get a new P A system. Um, I, I got my notes here that I, I put together, but I'll, I'll be candid with you. Um, it was eleven P M and I was a young captain in the military. Uh, I was a commander for Apache Helicopter Unit, and I was sitting in the DMZ between North Korea and South Korea on nine eleven. I take that to heart. This past year, just a month ago, we took the boys up to West Point so that they can see what the importance is of duty, honor, country. They loved it. You can't imagine, cannot imagine how disheartened I was that this nine eleven, I was sitting in the office of the town manager advocating to play the National Anthem for a youth sports program. So yes, it is about the kids. Because how do we now teach the kids duty, honor, country if we can't even play the National Anthem for a game? The advice I was given over the phone by somebody, and I have to apologize to that person because I probably was a little short. But they said, hey, why don't you just use a, a, you know, a little, a little Bluetooth speaker or something? We did. And I heard it because I was standing next to the speaker. Kids didn't hear it. So I think it's important, as we look at the program itself, and I'll give the group here a little background. The MudHog Program, as Nicole mentioned, was founded back in nineteen ninety-six. The name itself, MudHog, actually stems from the old fields they have where they're building the new school. It used to be all muddy because there was hardly any grass. So when they went to come find a name for it, they said, what do we call ourselves? Came up with MudHogs. It's rooted in Farmington. We helped build the snack shack. We partner with the high school. We partner with the town. So yes, it's about the kids. It's about the girls being able to play their music at halftime. It's about the culture we're building, the young men and women we are grooming, and the town that we live in, and the respect that we want to give it. So I, with that, ask that you support the initiative to expand it so that we can have night games. And I'm not even asking for night games on a Saturday. Someone asks a question, how often do you use it? Well, last year was two o'clock on a Sunday in, in the end of October. Overcast skies, I got kids out there playing football and they can't even see each other because it's too dark. I can't turn the lights on. This past Sunday, we're playing a game. We started at three o'clock. At four o'clock, I looked at the president league, I said, This past Sunday, we're playing a game. We started at three o'clock. At four o'clock, I looked at the president league. I said, Ashley, can you get the lights on? We didn't get them on. So there's a safety factor involved, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room that wishes to speak regarding this application? We're good. Any questions? Go ahead. Come on up.
So still Ellen Stosey at one thirty four Crescent. Um, so I don't mean any disrespect, but you kept mentioning it being constant. And it's not constant. It's not every day. Even what they're proposing is a very limited time. And with the new proposal of even the limited use of the P A system, it just doesn't seem unreasonable. It's not something that's happening. You know, it's not a play by play. It doesn't go on for hours. It's a National Anthem and it's a two and a half minute um music for the cheerleaders reform. And it's times three. So probably if you add it up, it's a half hour at most. I just think it's, it's a very reasonable request and I hope you see it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey. So I guess the only question that came up was regarding P A system, right? I'm sorry. Well, yeah, but we, I thought we would do this and then turn it over. P A system, is that even like something that could be pursued or like?
Yeah, it's it's obviously something that we could look into and we're happy to work with the Mudhogs for that. I mean, I think the solution that we proposed in here is to work with what we have. And I think setting that decibel level is a key factor in that so that we are trying to be respectful of the neighborhood and and not exceed the allowable limits. But in terms of a new system, we can absolutely look into that and we can partner with the Mudhogs with that as well.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. You want to try on mine, please, Shannon?
Uh certainly, if anyone has called in for uh to offer comment uh regarding the high school light P A system use at the turf field, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Catherine, you should be able to unmute your microphone if you could get, we'll need your full name and address for the record and you can address your comments to the commission.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, my name is Catherine Zelko. I live at nineteen Lantern Court in Farmington. I'm speaking in support of the permit for the use of the athletic fields, um including the lights and P A system. Youth and high school sports are incredibly important for community teamwork, mental health, and exercise for the youth of Farmington. Lights are essential for fall sports and night games throughout the year. If it weren't for the lights at Tunxus Mead and the Little League fields, my kids wouldn't have been able to play baseball at night in the fall or spring. And I see soccer teams using the lighted field almost every night at Tunxus Mead. The zoning committee has to consider the entire community and we have to be able to use the school property and athletic fields for their intended purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else has called in, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, this is regarding the high school uh application for use of lights and P A system at the turf field. Okay, one more time, folks. This is your opportunity. If you've got questions or comments regarding this application, you need to raise your hand. Otherwise, the commission will move on to other items. If anyone's interested in offering comment, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom so you may address the commission. Oh, Madam Chair, surprisingly, there are no hands raised.
All right, anyone else in this room? We're good? Okay. Um, let's so, oh yeah, come on up front, state your name and address, please. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Sinjo Yeo and I live in thirty seven Norwood Road. Uh, my wife is not here today. She's on a business trip, so she couldn't uh be make a statement about how she feels about the whole thing. I must say that my son graduated from Farmington High School and four years ago and he finishes uh, he's graduated from Yukon. And we are very glad that she got a good education from Farmington High School. But um the thing is that when my wife got the letter from couple of days from the um project management, she was very concerned because we live right behind the school. And um we just hope that when the P A system come into being, it will be a better system than what is it now. Hopefully that you're thinking into consideration that there are people who live near the school and we would like to have our piece as well. But we do acknowledge that the fact that the the children of Farmington needs a good school and whatever, you know, because I, I really think that you do, you guys are doing a good job. But then take us into consideration when you do something because there are people who are living around the school like us that could be affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Quiet group. All right, questions? Patrick, you have more questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay, Matt?
Just for me on a condition, right, is it, are we allowed or can addition be to ask that a new P A system be installed by a certain date? Or I just again, just thinking out loud here and thinking through public comment. Is that something we can't necessarily require the applicant to do?
I would suggest that it is a condition that it's um it could be uh considered or looked into, but there's fun rate. So there's funding and getting implemented that
Make a recommendation.
Right, so it it to be diligently pursued, I'm not really sure that we can this body can insist more than that. So you're you're really um as Ms. Kuduski indicated, the the presentation was made based on the equipment that's at hand. The commission can encourage pursuit of an upgrade to that system.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Almost up.
Okay, Scott?
I don't have any questions.
Liz?
No, no more questions.
Matthew?
Uh, so in two thousand and two, there were six events, two thousand and eleven, ten, two thousand and fifteen, fourteen, two thousand and twenty three, fourteen, or twenty two now. So every seven years we had four to five events. Can we limit that so they can't come back for ten years?
I, I don't believe you can put that limitation on statutory early, no.
Okay, um. I think it's important to balance it. All right, it does seem like, you know, we'll just keep going through this every, every couple of years. Yeah. And if we can't do it statutory early, we'll just have to, it'll be another special permit that comes in front of us.
Correct. So that's right. So anytime they do want to expand, it's in a venue, it would be very similar to what you're saying tonight.
Okay.
Which I think is good, right? It keeps
Right.
I I know one citizen talking about communication wasn't not enough time, but I do think that this process is important. I do think it keeps the town in the loop and it should stay. Um, I have a question about the high, the additional high school fans. What would they be for?
Those would allow our programs, which have expanded over the years to um to include some of their night games uh to host such events like the Pink Out or Kick Out for Hunger, um and obviously our senior nights as well.
And so fourteen nights you have now, you feel that eighteen would uh better represent all the teams or?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so we export, we ask the public, right, to speak both in person, online, we had a chance to ask questions. How are we feeling about this? Do we keep this open? Do we, as commissioners, feel like we have enough information?
One last, did we cover the, so in the items for consideration? I know we talked about Saturday and Sunday, and I know the Mudhog starts at eight thirty.
On Sunday?
On Sunday morning, right? And in there, um you know, and one of the items for consideration is is talking about, you know, a limited time, you know, in other words, I guess it would be the start time. Right now it starts at eight thirty. I mean, is there, is there a chance that it starts earlier than that in the future, I guess, is a, a question? Okay, okay. No. I don't want to bring my kid there at seven o'clock in the morning. Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Oh, just, just off Patrick's, right, so just to clarify again, right, the limited use audio, that can be for any during, during, on a Saturday or Sunday game, so during certain hours of the day for that, is that, is that just again during? I realize the limited use is, it's like five or ten minutes a game, right? Like it's National Anthem halftime show, which was stated as a couple of minutes and then any sort of general announcements, right?
Yes, we, we were intending those to be used for the tackle games that are on the turf beginning, I believe, at noon. So the three games from there. So the flag plays on the turf, but we didn't intend for the P A system to be used for those games. So I guess there is a time, you know, based on the first schedule, which is currently noon. I'm not sure if that would fluctuate in the future.
Yeah.
Um.
I think our, this, I'll speak forever, myself, right, we're always concerned with just approving something that could eventually be unlimited, right? So I'm just trying to clarify the use for that sort of limited. Again, I realize it's only a couple of minutes a game here, so, but thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm good.
You're good. Are we um, are we comfortable if I pose a public hearing? Do we have enough to vote? You need more time to think about it.
Good. Good.
Everybody's good? Okay, any, any questions before I close the public hearing for comments? All right, you want to come up, please?
Real quick again, Kristen Kirsch, twenty Orchard Road. Um, Mr. Vandal, your comment about the fact that the games we keep adding gate, and I say we, the high school, the town, the residents are are adding these time periods. Correct me if I'm wrong, those who are in charge of those games. It's because we, the town, I keeps collectively, are adding more teams to the high school, adding more programs to the rec department. So I think it might be a little unrealistic to say like the projection rate based on the number of teams that we have and trying to create Title Nine and complying with that, that those numbers have increased over time in relation to the number of students that we have in our student body, the number of teams that are created season over season. And again, we're only looking, and I say only, at the fall and the spring where this really impacts mostly the fall. It's not every Sunday that the Mudhogs are using that field from twelve on. But I do think it's important to just put a rain on that projection of do we put a cap on this? Because there are only a finite number of sports teams for junior varsity, for varsity, or for a freshman team. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon, regarding the new school, can that be a condition or can this whole noise level test be redone? How how can that be incorporated? Or can it?
Uh, so the commission can require noise monitoring at your frequency. So if you want it done whatever, uh, uh weekly or once a month in the fall and once a month in the spring for the next four to five years, what, you know? A- and so that's at your discretion to request the noise monitoring and whether or not then how, I guess, the the who and how whether it's done by us like we had done in the summer with our handheld noise monitoring device or so it need, there needs to be parameters to it. If you're going to require it, the more specifics, then we can comply.
Got it. Thank you. All right. All right, sounds like we're satisfied. So at this point, uh, we have enough information to make a decision. The public hearing portion is closed for this item. And uh before discussion, we need a motion in a second, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application from Town of Farmington for special permit to expand use of turf field lights for eight additional games, four games for high school athletics, and four games, community recreation and P A system requests for full use for all official high school games and community recreation night games and limited use for all other youth recreational games located at ten Monty Drive, R forty zone as presented.
Okay, and second? Second, all right, discussion. Um. I guess, you know, one thing I'll say is just because it's on my mind, I don't think anyone here is anti patriotic. We all love our country, but we do need to balance the proper use of the resources and the enjoyment of properties by homeowners. Want to get that out of my way? Um. Patrick, I'll let you start. So we have the uh high school and we have the additional groups, right?
So it sounds like the biggest thing is the P A system.
Yep.
Um, yeah. I mean, you know, we have, we have an ordinance and we have a mechanism in place, right, um, to safeguard against that. And I think really if if, you know, if there's, if there's a complaint and there hasn't been, I think it's important again to note that there hasn't been a complaint um in in the past with the use. Um, but if there is, you know, even if we allow it, um, that if if it's too loud, it could be shut back off again. And I think that would be incentive if that does happen. I think, you know, they're going to want to um, they're going to want to update the system and they're going to want to safeguard against that because it's a, it's a huge asset. Um, so if there were no safeguards in place for it, then it would be a, you know, a different story, but I I'm comfortable with the safeguards that there are. I guess, um, the avenue, there is an avenue to protect the neighborhood.
Um, Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong, is for noise ordinances, isn't it nine on Sunday? It's eight, you think, like, uh?
Nine to eight P M. On Sunday, that's for the daytime noise level of fifty one decibels. Anything outside nine A M. To eight P M. The maximum decibel level is forty six. The applicant indicated on record that the loudspeaker volume had been locked in at forty five decibels.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Patrick. I didn't mean to cut you off. Matt, how are you feeling about this application?
No, I'm, I'll go through my list here. So, you know, the lights, when it gets dark early, right, during the week, like, I think that one, it seems fine to me and reasonable, right? Like, the lights don't seem to be the issue here. Then the noise seems to be the issue, right? And how to think about the noise, right? So I appreciate putting specific numbers here because that helps me. And for me, I think plus four, plus four is a re- reasonable increase in use of this property. I do think we just have, we have popular sports here and people want to use this facility. So plus four for the high school, again, to make it inclusive and all other sports, and it's not just football, right? But other sports can use that. And then for you And then for youth sports and playing under the lights is like a big deal, so four times a year for me seems reasonable. Um so for the noise, like. The, you know, the monitoring and the condition about monitoring, and I think as you brought up, like, makes a ton of sense to me. Like, the noise is the big issue, can we, I get it, the system is old. And we can maybe recommend that, I know we don't have the power to to purchase a new one here, but there seems to be a need for it. Um, so again, that that's that's where I'm, that's where I'm at here, so I think. And again, I think the limited use, sounds like it's. Right, two and a half minute after, this is the Super Bowl halftime show, right, two and a half minute halftime show. The National Anthem, which we should probably be doing no matter what, right? And then a couple of general announcements, that doesn't seem like a heavy use to me for this, for this uh, for this.
Thank you. Scott, how are you feeling?
I don't know, I actually agree with a lot of what Matt just said, I think, you said at the beginning, and as it's about balance, and I feel like. Event numbers wise, it's pretty good. I think we got a P A problem, like everybody else has said, and it. I mean, I've experienced it myself, it it screeches, it's outdated, and so anything that we can do to facilitate. That getting replaced. Um I agree with Patrick too about putting safeguards in place and. Maybe we do need to schedule periodic, you know, have it. You know, written, it's going to be checked so often, every so often, I don't know what that interval needs to be, but other than that, I think it's a reasonable.
Okay.
It's a reasonable request.
Okay, we need to come up with that.
Yeah.
What is that gonna be?
Yeah.
Look like, how about you, Liz?
Uh, excuse me, I tend to agree with most of what's been said before me. Being at the end of the alphabet, um. Uh, I will say, I had kids at Farmington, I had, my daughter played lacrosse from youth lacrosse from second grade through. Time she became a high schooler and. I was her coach all those years, and I know what it's like to be a youth coach. We were not the same scale as football. Um, and I'm glad to see that. Spring sports are getting a little love, because it seems to be a soccer-heavy community here and a football-heavy community. Gotta give those spring sports a little love. And um I will say, it's great when we can get announcements and we can get the National Anthem. But it doesn't always happen, and we still persevere and are good, God-fearing Americans. Or contributing members of society, and if we don't hear the National Anthem, we'd love to hear it, it is an important part. So, uh I agree, I think the lights sound like they're great P A. And I definitely agree that the periodic check, building in a periodic check system. It would be great, maybe once a season. Not in August. But maybe in October, but you know, between October first and fifteenth or something, maybe we do a two-week window. Something as leaves are coming off trees, or maybe the October fifteenth through November. Excuse me, something like that, or in. Just so we can get a, because as Shannon was saying, and as the presentation was made. Things change from July, weather, humidity, leaves, construction, all those different things, so. Maybe we get a um. Give give a window of opportunity for a testing period and then have it get out there.
Okay, thank you. Matthew?
Uh. It's hard to follow all that up, honestly, I'm gonna echo everything that they've said. Um, I do think the lights are not the problem, I think it's the P A system. Um. I don't recall who exactly said it, but they said, you know, the hometown game, you know, that that is an important part of the community. It's it's uh. From my younger days, as you know, sorry, Plainville, but uh. Uh as a young football player. It was important, playing under the lights, that was an important aspect in it, so. Fully recognize that, I do think it's important to balance our approach. Uh that a lot of people in the community have lived there beyond when the lights were even installed. Um, so. You know, that's for the next meeting, if if we get to that. But I think it makes sense, I think monitoring is the key. And uh. I I think I'm good.
Okay. Uh, thank you, everyone, for taking this seriously, reading through the documentation, thank you for updating uh the proposal. Um it definitely has more information that we were missing. Thank you for testing the sound and making the adjustments, I think that's great. Um I still think. Besides the periodic check, it will be very interesting to see what happens to the sound and how it carries when the new building is in place. Um, so I think we need to take that in, um. I'm kind of on a fence for the high school piece, I think um. Allowing mud hogs and uh the youth lacrosse, I think. I think I have no problem with with that, and I think that um. That change to the limited P A use of the P A system, I think is respectable, what was outlined uh by the town. I personally think we should um keep the fourteen nights. For F H S Athletic. And uh add the four nights. Um, for the rec. Um and I I do, you know, I'm torn, because my son played baseball and. Man, those kids love playing under the lights, right? That's just like part of being a kid, part of being an athlete. Um but it's, you're still in a neighborhood, you have a P A system, and I know that we need to grow with the town, um. But there has to be some kind of control in this process, so my. My feeling is leave that count for F H S the same and do the four nights for Farmington, like. That's what Matt. So, we have a motion, we have a second, we talked about the check-ins. How do we want to condition it? Do we want to debate this some more? So is everyone pretty much okay with the twenty-two? Is that what it sounds like, I'm an outlier? Which is fine.
Yeah, I think I'm okay with twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's just good.
No, just and then the check-in, so I think when the high school is done, there has to be another noise test. Noise test, yeah, whatever I'm trying to say, and then um, I know we cannot uh, I think we need to recommend a new P A. I think that's probably gonna be. Huge.
Yeah.
To the neighborhood. From what I remember, the noise is coming from the top, not the bottom, so it, yeah. It's, I'm sure creating all kinds of havoc. Go ahead, you're looking at me.
Yeah, just for the noise, like, it doesn't s- seem like a labor-intensive test for the town to do, right? So, can we just do one now, November here, right, the leaves and and all that? And then N- November seems to be the last month until either the, we do it the spring, or we do it like once a month.
Right, in the first two weeks or something.
Right, uh and I, again, uh.
Sorry.
Open to ideas on during the first two weeks of the spring season and then. For the fall, right, this is mostly gonna be a fall issue.
That's what it sounded like, right?
Yeah.
Fall.
So.
Heavy.
In, I don't know, September, October, November, like, once a month during the fall season. I don't, I don't know, unless it's like labor-intensive for the town, but. Um. We're gonna, I assume people from the town will be at the game anyway. I don't know if that's practical from a town perspective.
Go to the games, we're not that. Um. Yeah, I mean, it it, any of this can be executed once per month. Could be executed, I don't know that we want to do this in perpetuity, having a sunset on it might make sense. But, yes, it. That would be reasonable once per month, and we're talking high school, we're talking Sunday afternoon, you're talking both. Again, like, it starts to, this starts to really get into.
I I would, I guess, the high, right, high school football games are probably the heaviest use and and the announcer event, right?
This is the whole thing, right?
Right, so that's like during a a Friday night. High school football game to throw in a suggestion, and then. Um. Again, what, this whatever spring event gets decided in in this, right, once, we could do even once in the spring, right? So once now, once in the spring. And if we want to do one of the the new rec games, I don't know if those are happening this year, they're gonna happen next, whenever that rec game is, right? So bounce the high school versus the rec, and then. Let's just cover all bases and be, and then that's kind of it.
So hold on, we're doing.
Not to make it too complicated, you know, you get, I'm getting at her.
So. Uh, can I give you my my interpretation?
Yeah.
So we have one sound check before the end of the twenty-three fall season.
Right.
We have one sound check, spring twenty-four season. Continuing a sound check a season. One year past the opening of the new high school. Because that gets your sunset in. Does that seem reasonable, and then we can see, then we'd have two seasons worth, once the high school is. Or did you want more?
No, I think that's reasonable. I mean, I think it's a good idea, because.
Yeah.
Well, the high school, I mean, once it's settled in, right, you know.
Right, and if we go a year past, we can see.
Right.
What's going on.
And then above the trees will be planted. The buffer.
Shannon, did you? Follow.
If I got it, then we're gonna do one sound check. Per, per season, once in the fall, once in the spring. From now through to the year after the school is fully operational and constructed, so. We'll see, it would be spring, it's supposed to open fall twenty-four, so it'd be spring twenty-five, we can go spring twenty-six.
Mm-hmm, okay. That makes sense, good.
Anything else? So what was done, outlined, amended is good?
Yeah, as presented.
Alright, as presented.
Alright.
So you wanna?
Recommendation about the sound system, right?
Oh, yeah, can you throw that in, will you?
Sure.
Thank you.
What she said, what he said.
Yeah, yeah, Matt has it, it's okay.
He's laughing as we.
Yep, and you're the second.
Yeah.
I like to amend my motion to approve. The application. From the Town of Farmington for special permit to expand use of turf lights. For eight additional games, four games for high school athletics, and four games, community recreation. And P A system requests for full use for all official high school games. And community recreation night games and limited use. For all other youth recreational games located at ten Monty Drive, R forty zone, with the following conditions. We would require. Uh noise m- monitoring once a season, starting in fall twenty-twenty-three. Through the conclusion of the spring twenty-twenty-five season. And the second condition is, we strongly recommend the town and Board of Education. To research, looking and purchasing, or enhancing the P A system currently at the uh high school athletic field.
And as pers- as.
As presented. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
We're good?
Good job.
I think so.
For a second?
I second that.
Alright, does everyone understand what we're voting for?
Yes.
Yep, yes.
Alright, um. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Substances, I guess it's unanimous. Alright. Thanks for coming in. Go man, go man.
Excuse me. Have to have Matt go shopping now.
I don't know what to do with.
Alright, we have um. Plan our report?
Uh, yes, I've got one thing for you folks, uh ten thirty-five Farmington Avenue.
Okay.
Green Tales Market has a new signage to replace uh their former Claudia's. So Green Tales is moving from where they would kind of bid Farmington Avenue. Uh down to the Claudia's space, Claudia's obviously right moved across the street, Green Tales was moving in. And they've got a new sign that they are proposing, so the sign. Is two separate signs, they're uh compliant with the. Area, their their building frontage is twenty-two square feet, they've got seventeen square feet of signs. Between the two Green Tales Market and then the pet supplies. So the total for both signs is nineteen and a half square feet, they'd be allowed up to twenty-two square feet. So there's plenty of um. Yeah, again, it's compliant in the uh. In the area, this is what it'll look like, is it's mounted on the.
Looks good.
Building. So unless uh, and it's illuminated, sorry, there's an illumination, there's a gooseneck light over top of the fixture. Um, it's been there apparently since Claudia's, he, it is on, it does have the ability to have a timer, he's not sure on the uh. The lumens, but again, it's an existing light, so. Uh if there's no objection, then my intent is to uh approve the building permit that's in for the installation of the sign. Unless the commission feels otherwise and wants any type of more formal application before them.
It's it's so darn cute.
It's.
Yeah.
It is inappropriate.
They they redid some of the.
Okay, the windows, I think.
Yeah, they took on the railing, right?
It does, yeah, there's a railing, because it was, it was a.
Okay.
Back for um.
Looks like it's a better rail, maybe.
It looks great, thank you.
Yeah.
And we're all, sounds like we're all comfortable with your handling.
Perfect, I will proceed accordingly. Um. And then the only other thing I've got is the, for those of you that have not stopped in any of them, there are. Plan sets and reports behind me for sixteen hundred New Britain Avenue. Um for the taking, and I think that'll leave me with just two or three for the, those that are absent this evening, and need to get them to them. Um. That's it formally, um coming up in November is the application on. Accessory dwelling units, and then also with the sixteen hundred New Britain Ave application, there's a. Uh, regulation, there's a text, uh new text for the New Britain Ave. Thank you. Like I'm forgetting a letter somewhere, but the New Britain Ave Opportunity Zone for their housing development. So similar to the South Road Opportunity Zone text amendment. This has the same New Britain Ave Opportunity Zone text amendment. So, um. Garrett, both of those are going to be ready for review, so we'll get those emailed out here in the next day or two. Um for everyone, so like I said, the uh. Obviously, the the draft that is part of the application is there. We've tweaked it and have track changes in it to go back to the applicant.
Okay.
So that this, the New Britain one aligns more closely to the South Road. And for the um. Accessory dwelling unit one. Um. Garrett and I've worked with it a little bit, so that it aligns. It merges our attached accessory, our apartments, and then the detached, so that we're, it's gonna cover both. That will be sent to the applicant in the next day or two, so they have an opportunity to see it as compared to what they had submitted. Um and then it'll also, it'll come to you folks, so that you've got a little more time than the standard for taking a look at these, so. I had to get all of this to you for tonight, and then I'm coming back around, so tomorrow morning is uh text amendments and regulations.
Excellent, and A D U's are making the news, right? It's definitely talked about in federal level and some funding and.
Yes.
Texts, right?
So, and then we'll come back, once we muscle through some of this, we're gonna come back to some of the inclusionary zoning things, I've had. Uh two inquiries on inclusion, so from outside developers looking at properties. They, as we had put everything on hold, wanting to know what we may or may not do with inclusionary zones, so I've got to take a look at that, but also the. Um, the ordinance for the fee, the linkage fee on the, it's a building permit, that one or two dollar. Uh per thousand linkage fee to uh fund the housing trust fund. So that's, that's kind of the, that's the next, so once we get this block out, that's the next immediate to take a look at. Um. So, it will be with some of you, perhaps not all of you. Um but then also, like we've talked, the ordinances will require uh town council. Okay?
Thank you.
Uh I think that's all I've got, Garrett, did I miss anything that you can think of?
Any questions for Shannon?
Anything, anything else I missed, somebody needs info on or anything, nope. Alright, so let's, so Sandy's not here, and she always reminds us, we gotta go on the minutes.
Make a motion through the minutes of the Oc- October eleventh, twenty twenty-three Tom Plan and Zone Commission Meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay, sorry, yeah, nine, nine-ten. Meeting adjourned.